Order.
We do not have chief.
Is that here?
He's there.
Hmm.
I saw it.
You feel good?
It'd be better if you were.
Are we being deputized?
Yeah, later, later. Okay, this is special meeting. We acknowledge the press and public have been properly informed. Purpose is to consider an award of sole source contract for two-year contract in amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-six cents to T2 Systems for software and database management relative to beach parking. So, I'll open the discussion up and make that as a motion.
I'll second that.
Second. So, Linda, you're on.
Okay, so, the first thing I need to tell you is that there's an error in the amount because sales tax was left out. So, the sales tax on that amount is one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents, which makes the total award fourteen thousand, eight oh two eighteen. I made that discovery last night when I was doing my preparation for the meeting, so I apologize that that was not included.
Let me amend my motion to fourteen thousand, eight oh two eighteen for the sole source award for T2.
One second, I have a minute.
Okay.
Okay. So, this will enable our new parking permit system by allowing citizens to go online and at, you know, their convenience to apply for their parking permit and all of their, they can submit their credentials and everything scans of their credentials online for verification by the police department, and then, once that is done, then they can receive their, either come back and pick up their permit, or they can receive it in the mail. T2 Systems is the system that we use both in the court software and also in, for the management of the parking tickets, and also in the handheld ticket devices that are being used by the city. So, this has full compatibility and integration into that system. The other thing that it will do, the ordinance states that people will not be able to get their parking permits if they have any outstanding tickets with the city until those tickets are satisfied, and that this particular system will go out to our other T2 system and check if they're outstanding tickets, and if there are, it will not allow a permit to be issued. So, it enables our ability to make sure that we do not issue a parking permit to someone who's got outstanding tickets with the city. The other attractive thing about it is that it will, we can put a link on our website, and that will immediately take users to the, to the ability to access it via laptop or via their mobile device as well, since it is compatible also with that. The, the reason it's on the agenda today is because we did not budget enough money within the FY16 budget to be able to accommodate this level of expense for the parking ticket management, but it certainly makes, this process will make it easier on our citizens than a manual process, and so, we strongly think that it is the best database management for the system. The parking management is in your budget on page twenty-three, line one oh six, and page twenty-six, line two sixty-four, and what we would be proposing here is this ex-
How much is that?
The, you mean, how much money is there?
Yeah.
A total of fifty-five is available. It's a little bit more than that, but, but we're recommending fifty-five thousand of what would have gone towards the next phase of the wayfinding sign to be put towards this expense and some additional expenses that we'll talk about later on the agenda.
Okay. Questions? Anything we can do to make this process easier on our property owners and residents? It's, it's in our best interest to make this as painless as possible. And if we can use a system that integrates with our existing systems, it's even an added plus.
Is there any money in the budget for the city?
I think we had about three thousand dollars of wiggle room, and you'll remember, this was, this was the conceptual budget. I'm going to show it to everybody. Look like that. I, I attached mine to the back of my purple budget just so I would have it for easy reference. And I think what happened was when we went away from requiring people to pay for the beach parking permits, which was the central component of the electronic portion of our budget, when we did that, when we were working on the FY16 budget, we just removed the line item having to do with any kind of mobile application or electronics, and we actually should have retained some of that in the budget. This is a little bit a case of going from conceptual to passing the ordinance, and now we have something real to implement and looking at what it's going, going to take to do that. So, roughly, I think we had like a three thousand dollar amount in there for contingencies and things like that, but this is significantly greater number than that. So, it, it essentially is not budgeted.
We need to recognize that this is an ongoing process, something we've never done before, so it's not perfect from the start, but if we can make it simpler for the residents, it's be less painful on all of us.
Excuse me, are we going to take the money from the wayfinding sign budget line?
Correct. This portion, and then, we're going to recommend using the balance of it too on some things that we'll talk about later on the agenda.
Next item.
And that's standout?
It would have been monies that would have gone towards sign fabrication for the wayfinding signs and some standout.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item is discussion of budget impact of implementing the parking.
Okay, so, this, this gets us to the next discussion, and that is the expense of signs. When we built this budget that I just talked about a little bit earlier related to, related to the implementation, we counted conceptually where we thought we would need residential parking signs. So, in other words, we looked at the streets and counted, you know, I need a sign here, I need a sign there, I need a sign there, and counted up those signs, and that's how we estimated what it would cost for signs. So, now, we have an actual sign per, encroachment permit package that has been submitted to DOT, and all of, all of those signs are being done in accordance with SC DOT's, I'm going to try to say it right, MUTC requirements associated with signs. So, now, we've gone from concept, okay, this is how DOT is going to require that we put these signs out there. Now, these are, remember, we went to four feet off the pavement on the opposite side of Palm. We had not planned on that when we were doing this conceptually, so we need more signs on the non-ocean side of Palm that say no parking four feet of pavement. So, that was added, and we have the residential parking area signs, and that's basically two signs. Chief B's got some examples of these, but that's basically two signs that says residential parking only, and then, there's a smaller sign that goes under it that has the dates of that, the time and the dates of that enforcement, so that you know that it's only during that time. And then, we have beach parking signs. So, now, we know all of the signs that we need, and the estimate for those signs has gone up from roughly the forty thousand dollars that we thought it was going to be to seventy-eight or so plus a contingency of twenty percent. So, we have the need to use the balance of the money that we had earmarked for wayfinding for this year for the rest of that expense, and then, some additional municipal ATAX money for, for signs in order to be able to implement. Now, this is conceptual because we've not gone to bid, so the bids for the signs could come in higher or lower than what the estimate is for all of the signs that we will need to put up. SC DOT is considering the encroachment permit right now. We were able to advocate for and push it somewhat today in a meeting that we had with Robert Clark with SC DOT, so I'm hopeful that the permit is going to be released soon, and we're working on the bid package for the fabrication and the installation of the signs. So, this is kind of foreshadowing that I think we're going to need more money, not only do we need more money for the T2 system for the management, but we'll likely need more than what we had planned for, for all of the signs.
Okay. You have a spreadsheet in front of you that tries to, you know, show you all that stuff.
On the signs, Linda, you were saying that we have, we identify residence, residential areas, so those are, this is where you can't park.
Correct.
Resident only.
Resident only parking.
Then, you said you have beach signs.
Says beach visitor parking.
And where do those go?
Those go where you're allowed to, beach visitors can park.
So, we have where you can and where you can't.
Correct. Well, where you can only park if you're a resident, and where any beach visitor, resident or non-resident, can park.
And these are only outside the gate? Nothing inside waterway?
Correct.
Linda, are these signs the industrial strength signs that you're going to see at a prison or something? We've talked about this several times.
You have experience.
Or something that's going to be a little bit more attractive, a little bit more aesthetic? A turtle or a surfboard or a beach boat or something?
I, I wish that SC DOT would allow us that creativity, but on their roads, on their right-of-ways.
Have we broached the subject?
We have, and we've broached the subject of painted lines on the road, color coding the road as opposed to, you know, signs at all.
Well, you know, DOT, I mean, you come down twenty-six, and they have painted signs for, I mean, they, they're breaking their own rules.
Well, and they say they didn't do that, and they don't know who did it, but, you know.
Oh, somebody just snuck in there, yeah.
That's what they say. I'm just telling them, just, you know, don't shoot the messenger here, that's, because we did the same thing. We said-
Ryan had a great idea about doing that, and it's, boy, it's-
And we got Greenville in trouble, and they were told they needed to remove theirs, so.
So, this is a moving target. You know that, but we're moving closer to the goal. You know, we need to have the signs, and we need to have the signs that conform to what the permit's going to allow us to, to do. The chief has, I guess on Thursday, we will have-
And that's the next item on the chip.
Well, okay. On Thursday, we will have actual signs there, so you'll be able to touch, feel, kick, bend, whatever.
You won't like them.
They look like standard-
I'll be irrelevant very quickly.
Get stickers, some turtles sticker.
Well, I mean, okay. So, that's-
One more thing, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And the income, I can easily see all the expenses, and the income is coming from muni and state accommodations. I mean, it just, it doesn't break out where we're, how we're going to pay for all of this, nor does it give me an idea of these packets of permits that, that residents are going to have to purchase, and they're going to have to purchase them, right?
They're fifteen dollars for a book of thirty, if I'm, for guess.
If, if they wish to.
Yeah, they don't have to.
There's nothing to-
Right. Why do they have to pay for it?
That was the way the ordinance passed, was that it said that, you know, I mean, we modeled our ordinance after the City of Charleston's and-
And the ordinance actually states that we have to charge fifteen dollars per resident.
This is the first year, this is the first year we're obviously trying any of this. And if the fifteen becomes a bottleneck-
Next year, you can change, amend the order.
I don't think it's a bottleneck. I just, I just think that any tax-paying resident of Alapalm should not have to pay for a packet of anything that has to do with a parking program that allows non-residents not to pay a cent.
But that's not in that area.
Not paying to park in an area.
In the residential area.
Visitors can only park in the designated areas, but-
But that's sort of not the point. The point is, could we change it?
Right.
We can always change it. We'd have to go through an ordinance change, and it's, I don't think it's going to be that onerous. I don't think that many people are going to want it.
Yeah, that's not going to sit well with people. I wonder where that was in the ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm sorry I didn't catch it before, but I didn't realize it was that specific in the ordinance.
They can buy two packages of thirty each.
If they need to.
These are forever passes. They don't expire.
There's no date on them.
One use.
You write, you write a date on them.
The, the property owner fills in a date, and it's good for that day.
But you have to do it per year, right?
Correct.
But they don't, they don't-
For the guests.
No, they don't expire like forever.
They don't expire, though.
They don't expire?
Oh, yeah, they buy a book. I mean, we have no, we don't have a date on it.
That's only if they park in the right-of-way. Right.
It's only right-of-way. They should have their own property to park on.
Right, but if there's a party at my house at Christmas time-
This is not-
No problem.
No problem.
It's only summer, first of all.
It's only summer.
All right, great.
So, you have Fourth of July party.
Fourth of July party. Let's use another party.
Yeah.
Then, they would, each car would have to have some notification that they're-
You have an added problem in that they'd have to be off the table.
Right. Right.
That's why you just give them to park on twenty-seven. At the rec center and walk up to your house.
And, and the folks from Goat Island, it affects them, right? Because they can't park on Waterway.
They can't park?
They can't park at all.
They can't bypass us?
Right.
They have no rights.
Question. And I've said this many times, Forty-first Avenue and Waterway Boulevard?
Yes.
What's the status of parking along there?
As we had discussed, and as the map shows.
Yeah, there's been no change since, since council approved the concept where the lines were drawn.
But it's a residential area.
There are areas around Forty-first and the Marina that were not treated, areas around Breach Inlet that were not treated, and areas around the rec center like Councilman Buchanan mentioned that are not treated. And what I mean by not treated, they're not designated in any way.
You mean, all the way from Palm to Waterway is not considered residential?
I would have to look at the map to see what's, what's red and what's green on the map, but, you know, the areas where it became too difficult to come up with a solution, and it was stalling everything going forward for the rest of things, we left them as they were.
Question, a second question to the same. Is it going to be four feet off the road, or are they going to park right up to the edge of the road and-
Four feet off the road is only on Palm.
On Palm Boulevard.
You'd have to have your tires off the road anywhere else.
So, it's the same way it is right now?
Which is a disaster.
No, four feet off on Palm.
I mean, in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And it's the same way. It's just wheels off the road, anywhere on the island except Palm.
So, the trailer parking issue on, on Waterway has not been addressed?
The-
Boat trailer issue.
The issue around the Marina has, has not been addressed. But-
But we knew that going into it, because that was the whole thing, is we were going to, like I said, that area and a couple areas that were holding the whole project up, and we were going to go ahead and try, take, like we said, it was like eating an elephant, is one bite at a time.
Right.
Let's get, let's, yep, let's get something in place, start with it, so it actually handles a lot of the problems that we have, then, let's start addressing some of these other issues as it's going through, but let's get something in place that we can start to address these problems, then, we can start to see how it impacts, because then, we may do something that may impact these other areas, you know, just the kind of way our water flows, you know, but it's, um, we just need to have something in place so we can keep on going.
This implementation season will be the difficult season. It will be the season where we will learn what we should amend about the ordinance and where we will learn what's working well, and, you know, we will have the flexibility after the first season to make those changes.
Right.
And to either increase it or decrease it accordingly.
And with the trailer parking along Waterway, a lot of it is along the golf course where it's not parking in people's yards, per se, but parking just in between-
Along the golf.
Along the golf course. Going up to Forty-first, I can see that as another problem, because it, I mean, it does, you know, it can start reaching into other people's, in front of their house, but, like I said, it's one of those things we just need to, we'll address once we get this thing in place.
Okay. So, you're informed that this-
There's no further action that's needed tonight, only, you know, to know that you will be making a contract award in the future related to the signs, and our expectation, based on the estimates that we've received, is that it will be more than what we had expected to pay when we built the budget. So, that's, I just wanted to foreshadow that for you.
So, hold on to this sheet of paper, although we can-
Before we leave this sheet of paper, can I ask a couple more questions? One pickup truck, is that something that we have to have? On this budget?
All of the, I want to say everything has either been ordered or procured with the exception of the signs and the system, because those were things that were approved in the budget.
Yeah, I'm just trying to look at, you know, way we could save some money and not be over budget, like eliminating one item and still have the ticket writing capabilities with the low-speed vehicles. I mean, that alone would make us flush.
We flushed this through when we did the budget and, and did the discussion on it.
Yeah, but, but our costs have gone up since then. I'm just trying to-
We can't enforce it without the appropriate tools for the enforcement arm, which is both the low-speed vehicle and the vehicle.
Hit a dead horse, but we have four additional BSOs, right? We have six already, and then, this is four additional ones that are primarily going to be assigned to parking, or principally assigned to parking. And the low-speed vehicles, how many vehicles is that?
And those have been ordered, I believe.
I know, but are there four of them?
Chief, do you remember?
Three.
Three.
That's three. So, we have three that are in low speed and one that's in a pickup truck, right? And all these, these four men or ladies work every single day?
No, they work shifts, of course.
Then, why, I mean, so, when you have two working, you have two aren't working, all of the equipment for these two that are working are being used, but all the equipment for the ones that aren't working is not being used.
But that's-
Won't, won't they be used on the weekend or all the time?
They will, they will be used.
Where the activity is, they'll be, you know-
We're going, we're basically going from parking enforcement that has existed in some, some very focused areas-
Right.
To parking enforcement in the entire island for the residential parking enforcement. So, you, you will see the BSOs having to be in a lot more places than they have historically been.
Right.
And are they going to be in the traditional yellow shirts?
I don't know what color their uniforms are going to be next year. Chief, you-
Yellow. Normally, yellow, I guess, so that you can identify them.
Well, they'll be identified.
That will definitely be identified.
They'll be the ones with a target on them.
Don't wear one.
Do we have a mechanism where if someone parks on a, once this goes into effect and someone parks illegally in someone's yard, do we have where-
What, you say in their yard or in the right-of-way?
Well, in the right-of-way.
Okay.
All right. Right up there, do we have a mechanism where someone, where a resident can call and have someone show up to ticket that vehicle?
Yeah, that's in place now. They have complained that's now.
It happens all the time, yeah. So, now, they're not parked illegally. People call, complain, there's a car parked in front of my house.
That's going to be part of the education process, so, a number that people can call, because a lot of people may not have, this is a new thing. But, you know, you know, it's obviously, you know, with cell phones and everything else and-
We can certainly publicize the non-emergency number, but I will tell you that, just based on prior experience, that people seem to find the number to call. I, I know that in the summer, you know, we hear that, that people are calling and-
I just, I just take a picture of it and tweet it to IOPPD. They're pretty responsive.
It's pretty, yeah.
It's quick.
Yeah, they get it.
That's what I do.
Saves them from having to stop what they're doing, too.
So, we're going to go forward with this, with these resident passes or whatever it is. This is, what you say is into ordinance.
Correct.
I mean, I know you're looking at me like I'm crazy, but I'm trying to get a grasp of what's going on here.
We are, we are implementing the ordinance.
But we can change that.
Sure.
We can change it anytime.
Well, it has to go through an ordinance change process.
Right, right. But, yeah, because that's, that's not going to go over well.
Well, let me just make sure that I just add that if you all are going to make that change, it would be better, well, one of the things that you need to recognize is that your expense then goes up, because you have no offsetting revenue to cover the printing of these things, which we're getting prices for now. And I'm just wanting you to be aware of it, is, you know, they won't be free to get printed.
Well, but everybody, human nature is, everybody said, well, if it's free, give me some. I may never use them, but give me some.
Well, more important-
They stick it in their, yeah, when they're registering.
Right, but then, the law of unintended consequences, if, by having something accountable and cost, it's, it creates a value, and if not, we could have a number of properties add to a party city and let their friends park anywhere they wanted all the time, and defeats the whole purpose of what we're trying to achieve.
True.
So, you know, you, you, unfortunately, I didn't, you know, I'm not crazy about charging residents, but, you know, that's why I was pushing so much for the forever passes, so someone doesn't have them at the end of two thousand and sixteen, they're worthless, that they, they can use it for several years until they run out. But if, if we don't have some accountability where someone is, they're just going to, could let their friends and buddies from Mount Pleasant come in and park one, and then, we'll be back to where we were, having these problems we were just trying to solve, so.
So, if somebody puts a pass in their, in their relative's windshield, and they forget to put the date on it, would it be subject to a ticket?
Yep. There'll be a place where they can write in the date.
I know that. What if they forget?
I mean, they can come to a court and appeal it, and, you know, it can be adjudicated.
Yeah, the point is trying to keep, keep a lot of the courtroom. Anyway, okay, you know how I feel about it.
It should be relatively simple. It'll have a big phrase on their date, and it'd be blank, you know, you would think that they would, should know enough.
It is only for the right-of-way.
And it's only in the right-of-way, not on the property, of course.
During a specific time of year, during specific times of day.
And we need to get it done for the summit.
Yes. To which, we're moving on to item C, which is our kickoff at five-thirty Thursday. The staff is prepared, and I'm hoping that everybody here, is anybody here not-
Do we have cheat sheets?
Well, you have the ordinance.
Like a fact sheet? I don't want to have to read an ordinance.
Q and A?
Yeah, I like them.
Okay. You should have a Q and A at your, at your seats. Did you distribute it? But, so, could you snag those, because they're takeaways for you. You don't need to read them now. So, let me kind of give you a rundown of, of how we plan to, to set up for Thursday night. This is a kickoff public meeting. It is not a public hearing. We've met our public hearing requirements already, and so, it's a kickoff meeting. There will be very large posters showing where the parking is for beach parking and where it's residential, so citizens will be able to see that. We'll actually have a copy of the sign plan, but we don't think that many people are going to want to look at the sign plan itself, but Chief B's going to have actual copies of the signs so that, that people can, will be able to, to see the signs. We will distribute the Q and A sheet, as well as we have a single-page fact sheet that evening, so people will have those takeaways. And probably most importantly, for residents who wish to do so, they can go ahead and apply for their credentialing on Thursday night if they choose to do so. They won't be able to actually get their permit, because we're still getting bids for printing of those permits, but they can apply so that when the permits come in, we can, we can issue them. So, they will, you know, get in the queue to be some of the firsts.
What do people need to do to apply? What documentation?
They need to bring the registration of their vehicles and a secondary, and that'll be in this Q and A for you, a secondary form of proof of residency. It can be their driver's license, it can be their tax bill, it can be- Voter's registration, water bill, some other proof of residency. So, so basically, two things.
Question I've been asked is, what about the stickers that are already on the cars now, the hurricane sticker?
The reason the city elected not to use those is that hurricane reentry stickers have been issued to a lot of entities that are not residents.
But to tell them not to take those off.
No, no.
Not yet, no, not yet.
Some folks have said, oh, then I'll take that sticker off.
Yeah, no, I would not do that at this point. It may be that at some point in the future, we're able to use the residential parking stickers in lieu of, but, but right now, that is not the case. So, you, you will get a Q and A as well as just a single sheet that we are working on for, for Thursday's meeting, so that people will have a takeaway, and also should help you. These are like little excerpts right out of the ordinance that help you to know, you these are like little excerpts right out of the ordinance, that help you to know, you know, the salient points and the things that, that people may ask.
And we'll have copies of the ordinance there, too, a few of the details.
Um, I'm a little worried, and I hope I'm proven wrong, but the word has not really gotten out there about Thursday night. I wish, you know, Adama News and Mulch News and all those.
Well, Desrae, you wanna talk a little bit about what we, you'll need to come to the mic or Mariel first, you can adjust it, you wanna talk a little bit about what we have done?
So we have placed ads in both the Post and Courier and the Mulch News, we've also been tweeting the dates of the public meeting and on Facebook, and we've actually purchased Facebook ads to be running today, tomorrow, and Thursday about the meeting, and each ad promises to reach around five hundred people each day in the area, and we can see actually that a lot of people have been seeing, have seen it and have liked it, so we've been, we've been putting the word out there, if anybody has any suggestions of, of how we can do more of that, it'd certainly be welcomed.
Yeah, I mean, I think the word's out pretty well, the ad that we ran at the Post Courier was a four-color ad.
Right, no, I, I also have been, you know, sharing what y'all did, and I've got my own site that I've been pushing out there and asking other people to share it also, but I still, got that little fright is.
There's no question that will, people will come in May saying, why didn't you tell me before, or they see the signs go up, why didn't you tell me? Why didn't, you know, what is this all about? There's no question there'll be some people that will be in that world, but.
Always will be.
Yeah, and we'll work with them, and we'll ease them into the, into the process, but we're hoping that people, I mean, some people understand, but say, it's not gonna impact me, so they're just not gonna bother coming.
And golf carts are included.
Correct.
So we have to have the golf cart registered.
We also think that by allowing people to register their vehicles for the residential parking permit, we'll get more people come into the, to the public meeting, because it is an incentive to get that done earlier, before the season.
Come, be first in line.
Right, so do we think we'll have a majority of council there?
Yeah, is there anybody not going to be there? One, two?
I'll, no, I'll be there, but late, I, I have a, another.
Okay, we don't know what late is, I mean, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna be there as long as.
So I will notice it as a, as a meeting, since we think we'll have a majority there, but that is only for the purpose of, of meeting the requirements of the law, we will, it'll be a stand-around, flow-through kind of thing, not a sit-down meeting, so the idea is that citizens come through and talk to members of council, and look at the visuals that we have, and then sign up for the, for the parking.
Line of view will be served.
That would be great, can you be in charge of that?
No, if not at the rec center. Staff will be assigned to various stations, if you will, so there'll always be somebody at a particular site, you know, I'm hoping that members of council can, can sit themselves at a site also to help in the process if we're.
I'm sorry, I can't be there, but we have an opening that night, Laura English Christmas show.
That'd be more fun.
Yeah, well.
Is this what we say, break a leg?
Something like that. But I'd be there except for that, it's opening night, and it's a big show.
That's great.
Well, if anybody in council wants to come, you can come free. So now we don't have anybody going to.
You can come, I didn't get a chance to finish, you can come, you can come anytime during the eight-night run.
There you go.
Obviously not that night.
Okay, any other subjects on the beach Thursday, and not the beach, on the parking for Thursday night? All right, let's close the special city council meeting, move on immediately.
We will excuse Ryan and Michael.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
We should have council elect.
Smile on his face.
He's taking his sign.
Michael.
You guys can.
Yes.
Do we shift over one, or what are we doing here?
We're not gonna, we'll do that, you can stay there if you like.
Take your sign, so you don't forget your name.
Keep it polished. All right, let's go into our special council meeting here at six o'clock, or thereabout.
So, do we wanna have them come up and sit?
No, they're gonna sit right there.
Okay.
They'd rather look at us, they can participate. All right, first, first item on the agenda is appointments of standing committees, you have recommendations before you. I'll make a motion to, for the standing committees to be approved, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Question?
Yes, please.
This says Ways and Means Committee Chair and Vice Chair, will we vote on that tonight, or is that just?
No.
Why is that there?
That needs to be filled in.
It will be filled in later.
As, as all the other committees will be filled in, too, it's just showing that, this is, Marie's getting ahead of herself.
That's not seen that.
She's reminding herself that we've got to get that done.
Same thing with the mayor pro town. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Nays.
Three no's, okay. Our report from Personnel Committee, please. Personnel Committee?
Yes, if, you can all look at the, printout, fortunately, we now have all of them filled with the addition of Jolie Spell. Excellent, we have not interviewed her yet, but that's planned for as soon as we can, we couldn't do it before the holidays, but we hope to interview her, but she has an outstanding resume, has worked for ten years at the Wild Dunes Resort, she is the property manager, director of property management, so certainly fulfills the hospitality lodging seat. And I, would entertain any questions regarding anyone else.
Question, Judith Bleeker, cultural representative, what's her background?
I don't have that with me. I'm sorry, I don't.
I will scan it and fax you her application tomorrow if you'd like.
Okay, you know, we just have the strict guidelines, we gotta go about it, it's state law.
Correct. Right.
What is her, what is her craft, or whatever, you don't have, nobody knows?
We just don't recall it.
I just, yeah. She has served on some boards and, for the arts.
That's fine, I'll, I'll get it from her.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, that's your report, you have appointments, you're, you're proposing to nominate this slate?
This slate.
Okay, motion.
I'll back the motion to.
Second, okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. One no. Okay. Item four, consideration appointment of city judge, city attorney, assistant city attorney, you have in your package a recommendation to reappoint Michael Maloney as a, for two years as a municipal judge, with John Duffy serving as a, as an assistant municipal judge, and Sterling Halverson is our city attorney, with an assistant city attorney, Julia Copeland, I move for approval. This is, this is a one-year appointment, both are seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Question, the qualifications are Sterling.
Still here.
Okay, well qualified, thank you.
She's put up with all, she's put up with us all these years, I mean, trial by fire, I guess.
That answers my question, thank you very much.
Run her off, please. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, appointment of, for the Carter Board, we'll do that, we'll do that separately. Marty is willing to step forward once more, unless there's somebody else on the council that would like to serve on the Carter Board. Or from the, no, not me out there, all right, all in favor of allowing Marty to, allowing Marty to serve again on the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we have no need for an executive session, miscellaneous business, the only thing I can mention is that we have on Saturday, a fine holiday event being put together, organized.
Two to seven.
I can't remember who had the weather responsibility, I don't know. Me, me, okay, two to seven, the lights go on somewhere between five and five-thirty, depending on how the cloud cover and the sun sets, so be there, enjoy yourselves, tell all your friends. Any others, miscellaneous business?
Looks like a perfect day on Saturday.
Oh, oh, we do have another, oh, yes, please.
Have one other public safety matter, if you can join me, recognizing greatness.
She won the championship.
Sheriff, there's a sheriff in town.
Welcome, the sheriff.
Thank you.
I think, Ted, you've earned the next.
The irony is unbelievable.
You've earned an extra koozie. Exactly, all right, I move that we adjourn, and use the remaining time this month to enjoy our families and friends and each other, keep us together and help us safe, so, thank you.
Happy holidays.
Seven o'clock Thursday, two o'clock Sunday.
Okay, two o'clock Sunday's, I don't care, it's something like that.
We're sold out this Sunday anyway.
Yeah. Your kid.
Oh, that's.